We, the Bangla people, welcome you to our country. We are the lawful inhabitants of this peninsula for thousands of generations. We are part of this land on which we stand, part of the waters that flow in and around. We are part of the dreaming stories that are connected. The full awareness of oneness with the land and waters will ensure a future for the children of tomorrow. Gariya, Vana Guru Bangala Miranya, Yuradamelbu. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to our special meeting tonight. We have apologies from councillor Westerman and councillor Inglis. We do not have the absence of councillor Todd, which is good to see her here, thank you. Just before I go on, I would like to thank deputy mayor Pond, who has been thrown into the battle without much notice the past week or so, covering for me during a bout of the downtime. Thank you, deputy mayor.
You're very welcome.
Declaration of members' conflict of interest. Does anybody have any conflict of interest to declare? Councillor Campbell.
The surplus saving matter, I'm assisting with fundraising, so I'd like to...
Thank you. Any other conflicts of interest? Thank you. Item four, reports from council offices, 4.1, city growth, 4.1.1. The Nicholson Avenue traffic control report. Before I look for any discussion or recommendation, any comment? Yes.
Yes, through the mayor, just before we start going through the various items on tonight's agenda, we have foreshadowed that we're going to bring a number of matters before you this evening. And consequently, you have a number of matters on tonight's agenda. The reason we've taken this approach is that we wanted you, in considering each of the matters, to not do so in isolation without an awareness of the fact that at the end of the day, there's limited financial resources and human capital to progress all of the projects. So part of the discussion will be around how does council prioritise its investment, noting that we do have investment across the board. Some of the reports on tonight's agenda are for definitive decisions, including the first item. Others, at this point in time, are for noting, that as I said, are provided to you in the context of giving you a more holistic context to inform your decisions. In relation to this particular item, I might just now hand over to Jade just to present the high-level summary. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. I'll call upon Les, should I miss anything. This is actually a really good example of many of the strategic issues the city faces. I'm going to give it a real high-level summary. Les can pick up my pieces and then your questions would be most welcome. The crossing that we have out the front of Nicholson Primary School across Nicholson Avenue is a flashing light or Koala Crossing. In Australian standard terms now, if we were to build the primary school, it wouldn't be the meet-the-threatening standard because it's a dual carriageway on both sides of the road. That's not to say what we have in place isn't illegal or couldn't be renewed in its current form. It could and did have confirmed that, provided we acknowledge that it carries with it an inherent additional risk, having not met or wouldn't be built to today's modern Australian standards. Now, you'll see that flashing light 25 crossing elsewhere in region, all across Adelaide. Most of the time, it will be deployed only on the dual-lane carriageway and not... I'm sorry, I don't know what you call the single. So when we originally went out for tender, we didn't test that thoroughly enough, understanding the risk associated. So we came up with a pedestrian-activated crossing, full stop. And the costs associated with that with the tender process, you would have seen it far exceeded the original estimated budget, et cetera, et cetera. We've gone back and we've really tested your options, of which you could maintain and pursue the 25-kilometre Koala Crossing on the dual carriageway, noting that there is an inherent risk in taking that on. There is an engineering, a traffic engineering standard, that will state that the less risk is a pedestrian-activated crossing considering the dual carriageway. However, that Koala Crossing has been in play here in Waila for however many years. Community are used to it, community respond to it. So human behaviour says and have responded to that crossing for many, many years. So you may choose to have even a viewpoint that changing to a pedestrian-activated crossing may increase the risk. You can certainly see that at the Waila Secondary College and the use of that pedestrian-activated crossing is not without risk currently. And in fact, having teachers or volunteers in attendance even at that crossing has been necessary. But I wanted to be crystal clear that that's what your decision-making is around. If you were to build that primary school today and you were to put a crossing in place, it would be a pedestrian-activated crossing. We then went and tested further what sort of market conditions we are living in compared to others. And of note was the city of Playford's set of traffic engineering works for the 25, 26 or 24, 25 financial year. And it came in to be about the same as our costs received for this pedestrian-activated crossing. And yet they had four or five projects that they were delivering underneath that. So we've actually gone to the city of Playford's engineering department. We've grilled them and said, well, how are you achieving this? We've tested that with the contractors they've used and it's boiled down to the fact that we have a dual carriageway. So the pedestrian-activated crossing for that extent of two sets, as you get to the median and then across to the other side of the road, means that in effect we pay again between 30 and 40% more than what anyone in Adelaide is paying. So I'm very happy with the team's effort to thoroughly investigate this matter. And to Justin's point earlier, what we decide is our highest-risk projects and maybe what we find the funds to deliver. This is one of those that you might consider as a high-risk in that public safety space. Les, have I or Robin, have I missed anything?
Thanks, Jade. The points come off correct. I think the only thing to add is that when we went back to carry council's resolution back last time, DIT said they wouldn't support that proposal and therefore the resolution was not actionable, which has then forced us into what do we do next and why the paper's back here with everyone.
So we'll take your questions and your thoughts.
Councillor Simpson.
We have two other schools with the same problem. Do we not? Shall we address one? We have to address all three.
Are they the dual carriageway school examples? Yep, so...
Hengs Avenue School along Jenkins and Fish Street School along Jenkins. Is that the same setup? The difference is...
I believe they are.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
We're doing one, we do three.
So for your thinking, it's whether you want to renew the Koala Crossing or invest in the pedestrian-activated crossings. Costs are vastly different.
Councillor Knox.
Just a quick question. I appreciate the extra research that's gone into this, but we already have a resolution on our books. So are we going through the process of revoking that and following the processes to revoke that?
Yes, the report touches on that. A council revocation, council decision revocation either needs to come as a motion on notice from an elected member or alternatively as a report from the council administration. We're doing the latter, which is the provision of this report. If council adopts this resolution, now that you've asked that question, we probably should add some extra words in that the decision that you adopt tonight revokes the previous decision of council.
Any further questions?
Not a question, but I did attend Nicholson Avenue Primary School in the very long ago past. And I think when I was there, I didn't even remember the crossing being there. And back in those days, the poor kids didn't have a cafeteria either. So you had to wander up Norrie Avenue to get your lunch unless you took it with you. And in all the years since then, I don't recall any accidents at that crossing. So I'm in favour of renewing the Koala Crossing.
It has a proposal and Mr. Oxall seconded it.
Sorry, councillor Campbell.
Yes, I'm of two thoughts here. And I just want to share a perspective that fortunately many of you may not have the experience of. I don't know how many accidents have been at that particular crossing, but I have been to accidents involving children versus cars. They are horrific for the child, obviously, the driver and the community in general. And I think while we're looking at where we spend our money tonight, what we need to consider, especially with this, is where we think Waila's heading. If we think Waila's going to be expanding in the way that we are positively projecting, then we need to consider how many more children are going to be using that crossing, how many more vehicles are going to be using that road. That brings up the risk and the liability greatly. We also need to consider, is Nicholson going to need to be expanded? And the special school is at capacity. At some stage, there's going to need to be there as well. So we have three schools, one with primary school children, one with special-needs children on a dual highway, which is the bloodline of Waila. And from other conversations that we've had in an area that has concentrated interest at the moment. So while I think the existing Koala Crossing is adequate at the moment, I wonder how long it will be if Waila expands in the way we're thinking. Do we... How much would you pay to not lay awake at night, maybe in two, three years' time, for children killed on that crossing with the decision we make tonight? I hate to bring that thought up, but it is something when we're making a decision involving the safety of children versus how much money we spend, you have to be comfortable making that decision. I think we should go with the... At least consider and ask if in two or three years' time, we need to update that, have we wasted the money refurbishing the Koala Crossing now? Then should we seriously consider option D? What are we looking at doing in two or three years' time with the population of Waila? And what risks are we putting to children at in those schools if we do not make the right decision tonight? My conscience is leading towards option D. My accountant is leading towards option A. I'd just like to hear some more thoughts on what other people think, but I think everybody needed to hear that perspective. Needed to think about how they're going to feel if something does happen when our population expands. And think about the driver of the car, the child, the family and the community in general with the decision we make tonight. We won't know if we make the wrong decision if nothing happens, but we'll know if we've made the wrong decision if the worst thing happens.
Thank you, councillor. I should have seen this coming and suggested we suspend standing orders if we're going to have a discussion. Seeing I'm trying to get back to protocol because I don't always follow it. Yes. Could I seek leave of the meeting to suspend orders 15 minutes? Move councillor Deputy Mayor Pond, seconded councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Carrie, thank you. Anyone? Yes, councillor Simpson.
All due respect to councillor Campbell's comment. We had that crossing when we had a population of 30,000 here. And from my memory, which is not bad, I think I've ever had an accident there in 30 years or 40 years of using that crossing. And David might be... Sorry, councillor Knox, I don't know if we've ever had an accident.
Councillor Todd.
Again, just an opinion. I completely understand what councillor Campbell's saying. The end of the day, we're not moving... If we went with option D, we're not moving to a no-risk situation. There is always going to be a risk, no matter what the decision is that we might make. For me, the fact that there is a pedestrian crossing, what, maybe 30 metres up the road, which a lot of people do use if they're not comfortable using the crossing, the fact that it has been a crossing that has had no significant issues for quite some time. Personally, I would lean towards option A.
Deputy Mayor Pond.
I agree with councillor Todd. I think I'm leaning towards option A as well at this stage. We have to get bang for our buck at the moment. We are trying to rejuvenate the finances of some of our local contractors. We're trying to do a lot with a little. If the need... We haven't had any accidents there for quite a while. The community are very used to using that crossing as it is. If there is a need in the future where we do have to upgrade, we get lots of residents. With more residents comes more revenue for council as well. Decisions can always be changed in the future. But I do thank councillor Campbell for her perspective on it. Yeah, we do have to keep the community's safety in mind, but I'm definitely for option A.
Thank you. Any... Yes, councillor Knox.
Just want to draw your attention to the alternative option, option D, in regard to this proposal. And I'm assuming that the unbudgeted land transaction funding is the sale of the land for the hydrogen plant, which council has earmarked a number of occasions for debt reduction, not a spending, but debt reduction.
Through the mayor, just for clarification, not 100%. Some of the allocation was for debt reduction and some was for the investment in the foreshore precinct and the potential, the increased operating costs associated with water play features and improved public realm on the foreshore. So it wasn't 100% debt reduction, but I'm not sure, other than the foreshore, if there was any other commitments made. Sorry, I'm looking in your direction. Cathy Jarrett's online. Cathy, can you just clarify with the land sales, what's been potentially predetermined?
It was exactly as you said, Justin, the reduction in debt and also funding the increased operational costs of the development at the foreshore.
Just those two?
If I can add, you know, in terms of the funding for the Nicholson Avenue Crossing, there is an alternative strategy that could be used rather than from the land transactions sales and certainly in the context of option A. There is some reallocation of renewal programme and allocation of increased roads to recovery funds and also unspent curbs funding carried forward from 2324, that we can actually source sufficient funds for option A from alternative methods other than the land transactions.
Thank you, Cathy. Any other comments, questions, councillor... I'll put myself out. Can you hear me okay through the mic?
Yep. Just wanting to add another perspective on it. In a nutshell, I was of two minds earlier in thinking about this, but option A, I'm very much bang for your buck, as deputy mayor Pond has mentioned. In driving the strip there, if you've got a red light on Norrie, you're not really getting up to 60 at 3:10pm on a school day before you get to the 25 zone. I think there's already enough in place if the Koala Crossing was renewed and just six of one, half a dozen of the other, we carry a risk no matter what we do. And it's a $180,000 incremental rise, which you'll find interesting for a 20% reduction in the expert's eyes, but I'm interested to see how that works. But in effect, I don't think it's the best use of our community's money. If the safety was even more with the PAC, I might reconsider it. But as it stands at the moment, I'm voting option A.
Councillor Pobecow.
Just a general comment, just quickly. We need to find a balance between risk and value for money, and for me, that's option A.
Any further questions or comments? In that case, we have a proposed recommendation, which involves revoking our previous council resolution. And we've got option A and D. Would somebody care to move a recommendation? Oh, sorry. You'll have to forgive me tonight, please. Yes, could somebody move that we go back into standing orders? Deputy Mayor Pond, seconded councillor Knox, those in favour. Against Carrie, thank you. Would somebody care to move a recommendation? Councillor Knox.
I move A. But in doing so, I wonder...
I was going to just say he was to speak to it, yeah.
In doing so, I wonder whether we actually do need to move it because we've already got a resolution on the books.
Yes, through the mayor. As Management Capital Works deliveries confirms, the resolution on the books is essentially ultra-viris in that the Department of Transport and Infrastructure have said that they will not support a reduced speed limit on that road unless a pedestrian-activated crossing is installed. So the resolution on the book is not to proceed with a pedestrian-activated crossing, but proceed with the traffic speed reduction. We can't do one without the other.
And deputy mayor, you seconding that?
Yes, seconding option A.
And you were to speak to it?
I think everything's been said. I think it's a good option weighing up, as has been mentioned, risk versus bang for buck. We need to be careful with our community's money. If there's a need in the future, we can always rethink.
Thank you. We have a motion. It's been moved and seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Against Carrie, thank you. Item 4.2, city infrastructure, 4.2.1. The Point Lowly and Waila Marina Renewal Project. The dredging, the demolition of the Lowly Dock and demolition of Waila Marina Boat Ramp. We have a recommendation there, but before we go into that, refer to the city, sorry, the CEO. Or do you feel that we need to have discussion and suspend standing orders again? The feel of the meeting?
Yes, pressure. Are we in confidence?
Not yet, not now.
Not yet?
Good. Otherwise, I'll just refer to the CEO.
Yep, through the mayor. Again, just at the highest level, essentially this is work that needs to be done. Being the dredging as well as the demolition and removal of the dock at Point Lowly. We have looked at other options, including leaving part of the dock facility at Point Lowly, but it's a negligible difference between the cost of what needs to be done and sort of only half or three-quarters doing it. Most of the cost is in relation to the dredging. We believe that it's more cost-efficient to do the dredging of both marinas at the same time in terms of mobilisation costs. So essentially, it's two lots of dredging, which maybe, you know, other places have only got one marina, only have one lot of dredging to do. But it is something that dredging typically is only done every 20, 30-odd years, depending on obviously seasonal factors and the like. So it's unfortunate that the timing is nigh or now, that the dredging is going to need to be done. So the report essentially seeks endorsement to proceed with getting the relevant documentation and approvals in hand with that work being done next financial year. And with the removal of the Point Lowly Marina Dock at a relatively small amount as soon as possible, given the public safety risks that are associated there. The third recommendation notes that this is... Those two decisions are separate from the investment in the replacement of the Waila Boat Ramp, which is in the order of one, sorry, $2.1 million, of which we've received funding from the Rec Fishers. So that is not part of the focus of this report. That's separately invested, but that is covered with external grant funding that we have received, which that announcement's still being embargoed, has not... Waiting for the state government to make that announcement. Yep, so happy to take any questions of complication.
Councillor Knox.
Just a question in regard to the material removed from the foreshore marina onto the beach. That's GFG land. I presume we've got GFG approval to dispose the material there?
That's part of what council and Marathon Construction have been working through, is getting all the necessary approvals, and that is one of them.
I couldn't quite hear that.
Yes, it is, it's part of what we've been working through to get their approval for that, yeah. There's also still consultation with the broader community once a project starts to be undertaken at that point in time.
We have the approval, we're trying to get the approval.
My understanding is I have the approval from GFG to be able to use that beach. We're just working through the dredging plans through the EPA and coast protection at the moment.
Councillor Pobecow.
Why do we not charge users' boat ramp fees to offset some of these costs?
That's an excellent question, and we were hoping you would ask it. I believe there's probably councillors that would know in the past that there were fees charged and probably no more than administration or new administration anyway. Councillor Knox, would you?
We were charging a fee, but it was one of those things like the airport car park thing. You put your money in, get your ticket, et cetera. It was out of action more often than it was in action. So the council of the day decided to get rid of it. But I thought 12 months ago, we started talking about the reintroduction of marina fees and we don't seem to progress that any further.
So we have put this material together and it will be coming at a later stage, is that correct, Cathy?
Surely is, yes.
If I can just add to that, so yes, the reintroduction of boat levy fees or boat launching fees, whatever the right term is, is something that we will be bringing back to council very shortly. I'll just forewarn you, it will generate a lot of debate. My understanding is that part of the reason that council in the past ceased charging boat ramp fees was the ministry costs to actually look at enforcement and collection. With the advancement of technology these days, I think we can address some of those issues. But at the end of the day, we're talking about a nominal amount per outing. The actual cumulative contribution from bodys would need to be over an extended period of time to cover the sort of costs that we are covering. So it's a bit like the charge that we can... um, the charge that we can um impose on things like animal management things. Uh, it's a token amount for what the actual cost of the service offering is. Um, but I'll just, if you're not aware, just be mindful that it will generate a fair bit of discussion on some quarters about whether it's fair and reasonable that bodys get charged to launch their boats.
Uh, before I go on to elected members' questions, there's a list there. Uh, Cathy, you've got your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you. And through the mayor, my apologies, I should have expanded on my answer um uh when Jade uh referred the question. We have and are uh almost concluded undertaking a review of the leases and permits and licence fees and charges. And as part of that body of work, we have been doing significant benchmarking, information gathering so that we can bring to council a model in terms of fees and charges, not only for leases and licences, but also for various permits. And that does include the utilisation of the boat ramp at the Whala Marina and uh and others.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Campbell.
Just, you've, you've said that you've almost finished, but I just wanted to know if you'd looked at what they're doing up at Victor Harbour. It's a parking area they've got, but it could work the same way for the bodys. It's a, um, actually you do it with your phone. You can pay it with your phone. You scan a QR code and you pay with your phone and whether that's.
Yes, yeah, we're looking at all those different models and that information will come back to council shortly.
Very easy to use, really like that.
Councillor Simpson. Just to elaborate on councillor Knox's comment, is that if it's out of action, so sabotage more than anything else. They do a very good job of sabotaging things they don't want to use.
Just to reiterate, your thinking is, is, is spot on. We are very much an anomaly not having any fees and charges associated with the use of a marina and a boat ramp facility. So the benchmarking shows that, that we're probably the only freebie in a, in a, in a region or even in the metropolitan area.
Thank you. Any further questions? Otherwise, we have a recommendation, a three-part recommendation. Councillor Ford.
Moving.
You're moving, you wish to speak to it?
Yep.
Thank you. Councillor Simpson.
I got it.
You're seconding yours? No, you've already spoken. Thank you. We have a recommendation. It's been moved and seconded. I'll put that, those in favour. Against Carrie, thank you. At this juncture, we will now be moving into confidential. So would somebody care to move that we uh move, we go into confidential? Uh, move councillor Knox, second to deputy mayor Pond, I'll put the motion.
Deputy Mayor Pond was first. I've just got the magic one again.
Sorry, I've got you on top and deputy mayor on bottom. All right, I'll swap them around. Are those in favour? Guys, Carrie, thank you. We'll go into confidence. At that note, at ten minutes past seven, there's no other business. I'll declare the meeting closed and thank you for your efforts tonight.